I'd like to call the order of the Planning Commission, and I apologize for being late. I'm present. All right, we have the minutes of the, or no, approval of the agenda for tonight. Do you have a motion? Have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. Motion to approve the September twenty-third minutes.
And an addition to that.
We have an addition?
Yes. During the meeting, we discussed the name of the development, and I think that the developers were okay, you know, we're changing the name, and that's something we could work on, but there was no mention of it in the minutes. So I just want to make sure we have that in there so we can proceed with that.
I do adopt the minutes with that addition.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. Naysay, ayes have it. All right. Happy to walk. You guys are up.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Benny Boltford, your home and house of the County's Property Group. As you may recall, we were here a little over a month ago, especially this September meeting, where we presented the eight townhomes at what we call Hackett Walk, which is one less home than simply to report and approve of the various townhouses. Since we were in front of you, we had a chance to revise our plans in accordance with the comments from the Planning Commission, comments from your borough engineer, as well as the borough traffic engineer. We had a chance to revisit the traffic accounts along Main Street. That was updated in our study, and I believe the borough traffic engineer has now found the traffic study to be acceptable. They commented on three or four planning-related items where they'd like to see some striping, some handicap ramp speed design, and some signage being sold. All of those items are will comply from our perspective. The borough engineer also reviewed the plans in accordance with the borough's code and our discussion. And one of the things that we had discussed in great detail at the last meeting was the open space being on a single block that would be dedicated to the borough. But we made that change, and it's reflected on the plan today. So this evening, happy to answer any questions, go through any of the comments in the engineers' review letters from our perspective, that will comply items, or answer questions that the public has.
Do you need to go through every comment?
I have no intention to go through.
I have a couple of specific comments. Let me go first, and then you can, you can let the planning commission go. On the left, on the first letter, page three, or I'm sorry, page four, the comment is a detail, the light fixtures should be added to the plan. You have two light fixtures shown on the, on the plan. Chad, I think we need possibly two more lights, one middle of the, of the drive aisle, the driveway, maybe one at the rear, almost near the detention basin.
Yeah, I have a separate comment in here related to the lighting, and my comment is all the pedestrian walkway, and the parking areas need to be lit for security.
All right, so.
Where they're going to be located, they're going to have to design that, but I suspect.
Okay.
And then another one upon the parking lot.
Okay, all right, or at least, or just or something, something along those lines. You guys okay with that?
Yes. Yeah, it's a balancing act because you don't want too much light, or else you're spreading light on those neighbors out the street. They do make the fixtures with cutoffs, so that's a check. Again, that's all going to be designed.
All right. And then on page five, general comments. You have the open space shown, which is, which is good. I'm still curious about the parking easement. I, I was under the impression that the parking easement was a monthly fee or a once-a-year fee. Now that the current owner doesn't own it anymore, does that fee revert to the homeowners association? Or is there some clarity you can, you can shed on that?
It would, it would transfer with the property.
Okay, so it would go to the homeowners association to offset costs for snow removal and whatever else is, is being done there, you know, for the homeowners association.
Asking them to show the plan, to see the area that you're.
The fire marshal turning templates. I know our fire marshal reviewed the plan and, and basically approved it. Does he also review the fire turning templates, or is that something the fire department does, or how does, how does that work? Because we, we have an independent fire marshal. A lot of times, the fire marshal is affiliated with the fire department, so I'm just.
It's my understanding the fire marshal, and that same thing with Bennett's Court, the fire marshal had a number of comments related to the turning movements of the fire truck. So my understanding is the fire marshal has to be satisfied with the turning movement of the fire truck.
So our, our fire marshal will still review it in conjunction with the plans and all that?
And they have to be satisfied.
All right, so your comment is done, so you.
So was the fire company involved in that as well?
No, because we have a separate fire marshal.
I know, but was the fire company involved? The reason I'm asking that is it's their truck, you know, and they know their truck.
But we, we have the size of it, and we have the size of the turning template, but I don't believe they review the plans.
Well, yeah, no, I didn't even review the plan, or they consulted, just so they're aware of it.
They tried it their, their truck. They get the.
The truck size.
And the size of the truck, and then we use that as the auto turn analysis that we do.
Just trying to, trying to be transparent with our organizations.
And the movement showing, it's one of the, it may be a separate plan actually, but it shows a continuous movement, just like a three-point turn.
Right, yeah, I saw the.
I'm satisfied with that. I looked at it as well, of course, and it shows that it makes it with plenty of clearance between all the parking spaces, the curb, and fence.
How about when there's cars there? Right now, there's no vehicles in that, you know, and if they're in the street, if they're in the back there.
There would be no vehicles there, so I'll just point on the street. The parking spaces here, parking spaces are here, and so the truck wouldn't, nobody would be parking here. It wouldn't be a lot of.
I was more concerned with up top.
Yeah, there was, there's no, there's no on-street parking here in front of the houses.
So any maneuverability for the vehicles will be if there's somebody looking to exit the driveway. You can see the fire truck would enter the exit lane, but in that scenario, they would, they'd have to jog here.
So they won't be able to park in the street there?
Not, not in front of the units, no. The common area parking, and that's why they reduced one of the lots, because they have the common area parking there and along here.
Well, we put signage up that they can't park there.
Yeah, we already have the plan.
I'm just thinking of other developments in the borough where people park, like right across from us, right? Wrong direction, everybody.
Now, but just, just to make sure we're on the same page, this is a homeowners association. The borough is not taking dedication of any of the roadway improvements. We're not responsible for snow plowing. That's all going to be with the homeowners association.
Same, that goes for the utilities as well. It'll be privately owned.
Right. They'll have separate meters, but the, but the, the electric, they'll be like, are they going to buy bulk electric from the borough? Or they're going to be eight meters, and we're going to meter it?
Eight meters.
Eight meters.
That's okay with it?
No, no, that, that's, that's better. I just, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how it's going to be, because we're bringing electric into the site, and you're saying it's private, but yet they're going to have public meters. Steve's going to have to work that out.
Yeah, there definitely has to be a utility easement. There's going to be a blanket easement on property for stormwater benefits access.
Sure, there, there's an O and M agreement that's required and all that. Right, okay. No, I, I don't believe I have any more comments. No, I think everything else is pretty vanilla at this point, and will comply, but go ahead, Larry.
It's just that, on page five, general comments number two, we're about that barrier. A barrier should be installed to stop vehicles from driving into the community area, underground basin area. In, in your comments bag, was that a post rail? Is that what, what you were putting there?
Yes.
Is that sufficient for, because what we're trying to do is to stop vehicles from getting, from going in there, right? Because there's going to be people there, so.
Where can you see post rail?
It was in their comments back to you.
That's right where you're showing that was put my comment related to, yeah, right there, we'll add it. For me, would be sufficient, yeah, post rail. I don't see why it is, that's an accident due.
Well, that's what I was thinking. I mean, because we're putting it up there so a vehicle doesn't come through, right?
Can we put a couple of bollards up there?
That's what I was thinking, something a little more substantial, because there may be kids in there, you know?
Would you agree to a couple of bollards, just in case?
Something substantial.
Sure, bollards doesn't bother me either way.
All right, let's do that. That'll, I think that'll solve, you know, somebody not knowing the area, try thinking that they can continue through or loop around and, you know, plow through.
I think that's all on the first one. I've got some others.
Go through all your comments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, finish, finish, finish. Go ahead and finish.
The mailbox, can you show me where that's going to be? I couldn't see where you got that, or, oh, okay. Look right through it, okay. That's not so bad. Okay, that's good. Yeah, my concern.
It's a square.
Yeah, yeah. My, my concern with, yeah, I guess I should have. Was that depending on where it was, people, you know, like if it was, some developments put it at the entrance where people drive in, people are going to stop there, and we get out and get, and then you're going to have a mess, you know, so that's what I was concerned with. I like that. That's much better. So I want to go back to the traffic study, just so. So at the last meeting, we talked about that, and the traffic study and all the numbers were done based off of two thousand twenty-two data.
Yes, and we updated that. There were actually counts done in December of twenty-three, and so the study was updated with those counts.
So all of these papers here all have the two thousand twenty-two date on.
I can check with TPD, but we.
Yeah, it didn't, and the, and the numbers were the same as before that we looked at. I'll give you a great example tonight. I came that direction, because I live not too far from this, right around the corner. And when I came this way, I crossed over Main and Broad, and the traffic was backed up from that light all the way to cases. You know, so all that traffic was going through the light. It's going to be a mess. You also referred, or in the traffic study, they said that it was going to be four new trips during a weekday AM peak, and five new trips at the PM peak. And I'm really curious where they got those numbers, because we have eight townhouses with an average of two vehicles per townhouse. So that's sixteen vehicles, sixteen people. Most families are two, two people working. I don't know how they got four, four additional trips coming out there.
Say that again, was it a, a peak hour, or was it the?
Yeah, it was, it was, it stated four new trips during weekday AM peak, and five new trips during weekday PM peak. That number just doesn't sound right to me. How, how could that be so low?
So the traffic engineer uses data from the IT manual that studies communities like this throughout the state and country, and they generate what actually happens in townhouse communities. And so as, as much as we all might think that there's two vehicles in each house, and so it's going to be sixteen trips, it's not necessarily reality.
I don't think it's four, though, right? I, I can't believe it's going to be four, you know, because who, where are these people working?
So the P of peak hour is four to six PM.
Yep.
My family has two drivers.
Yes.
We typically contribute zero peak hour trips, because my wife gets home before four, and I get home after six. So like, that, that's how, like, that's just, but like, I'm, I'm a household, I should account for one point seven, I count for zero. So again, they, they look at it for just that window.
Sure.
So when you're driving here at five fifty-five, and still in the peak hour, both anybody driving after six doesn't contribute to that traffic area.
Right.
So again, it's just, it's just the snippet that they look at, it's seven to nine in the morning, and so if you go to work at nine thirty, you actually don't contribute anything to that, or if you work at six thirty. But we all think of it as the morning rush, basically from six to ten, but they only look at it.
That sounds great, that sounds great. I like your explanation. I disagree with it. I cannot believe that that would only be four trips, right? I mean, there, there's no way.
That's your opinion, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and that's why I want a new study with a new count.
Yeah.
I want to know what's going on down there, because, you know, that was pandemic, and nobody worked, and then how long did it take to get people going back to the office, right? I mean, I know where I work, it's like that. Now they're making people come back to work. So now these numbers on the road are going up, 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 you know? That's good, it's going to be a mess out there. It's going to be a freaking mess out there at that intersection. Yeah, no, I, all these folks live there. I live right around the corner.
I, I live in, I live in the next town over, so I've never been all the time.
And I can tell you, we just got a little taste of it with the road being closed while they're doing the construction. I live in a dead-end street right there, where there's no access out. And I work from home, and you can't believe how many cars I've seen come down our street, down to the dead end, and then have to turn around and come back out, because they're cutting through.
Sure.
And that's the same thing that's going to happen with Wayne Avenue. They're not going to be able to make the left to come out of there. Traffic's going to be backed up, they're going to make the right, they're going to cut down Wayne Avenue. So it's not just affecting just that little area, it's going to affect, that's the big deal with this. This is health, safety, and welfare of all of these people, and all those people that live over there. That's just my, my piece. Yeah, so if you can find a little bit about that. Montgomery County Planning Commission made a couple of comments. I just, with just two of them. One was related to the trees. Trees that were, some were coming out, and we said we were going to put some in, right, to replace those. It was under oh, page two, and it was under landscaping. While the applicants requested a waiver of the tree requirement, this is from Montgomery County Planning Commission. We would recommend additional trees to provide appropriate shade and aesthetics where feasible. All shade trees should be from blah, blah, blah. Part of the SALDO Act. We're, that's pretty important for Hatfield. We're currently working to get the borough established as a tree city, because we do the work. Our, our public works crew does a great job in the parks. They're doing the work. We want to get them recognized. So you don't want to be ripping the trees out, not replacing them.
Yeah, so we do have a number of trees that we're going to be planting in lieu of a screening along our property border. We did use a fence. So we do have a number of trees that we're going to be planting that will be appropriate size for our entrance as you, as you go in. So, so we're not ignoring trees, we're just trying to be smarter about where we use trees versus a fence.
Yeah, yeah, I know Steve had a, I talked to Steve a little bit about this, and he had a little concern too, of where we put them, because, you know, we ran into that out here, where people kind of put them under the wires. That's a great thing when they get big.
That as well, in my opinion, they're putting trees in the only places they can.
Good.
I think if they try to forge more trees in there, it's going to cause more problems.
I was just looking at the comment by.
And then it's the comment.
And then one more on that, and it's right above that, the dead-end street. The Montgomery County Planning Commission had a concern about that up there. They said the access driveway delineated on the plan may be deemed a dead-end street. It is uncertain how cars will adequately maneuver within the area at the end of the drive, access drive. There appears to be a lack of backup space for unit four in particular. So we just need to keep that in mind.
Those are all three letters. That's all my letters.
Okay.
So they're, they're going to extend the, the driveway out, so there's a, there's a backup area, correct? That's fine.
Oh, is that what that line is there for?
So, so right now, it stops here, or what everybody's suggesting is maybe it goes.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yes, yeah, I just didn't see it on the plans. Okay.
Usually I prefer ten, you're, you're showing five on the top one, and if it's twenty-six feet wide, I would just five would be enough.
You don't have more comments? That's fine, Larry, do you have any comments?
I have nothing, hasn't been covered already by you two gentlemen.
I know we, we touched on a bunch, but is there some things you want to go through?
Yeah, there's a couple highlighting comments. They are requesting two waivers, please, I don't ask. Basically, probably, traffic aside, is the open space. I know the zoning hearing board requested open space to be offered for dedication to the borough. And the plan now, no one opens space. We need to understand, first of all, what that open space would be used for by the borough. What the intentions are of, you know, we've had discussions of getting people walking from Main Street, going from the trees to Centennial Park. If that's the case, we have to provide safe walkways from one point to the other. But we have to look at it also from a planning perspective, and what that means to the plants. If it's dedicated to the borough, then it's a subdivision, which creates a new lot, a new parcel that would impact their setbacks. We'd have to really consider, you know, lot four now, or unit four now won't be compliant, because it won't be the setbacks unless they push it over, which is an option. They're not going to meet their density requirements, because the site will now be too dense for the lot that they'd be creating for this development. But more importantly, we need to understand, is the intention to have people walk from North Main up that new sidewalk, across that drive aisle there between the two buildings, through the woods, ultimately to Centennial Park? And if that's the case, how do they get to Centennial Park across the creek? Or walking on the Walker's property, which now would require an easement for public access? Because there is a bridge there now. In my opinion, if that's the better option, why build a second bridge? But that would mean, you know, the Walker owner would have to agree to that, otherwise there's no point. You know, people will, if you build a walkway there, they're going to walk on that property. Which means, you know, his next step could be put up a fence if he can, so how do you get across the creek?
No, I get that, but I, I, I think in, in respect is, is this is our opportunity to get a piece of property that we don't, we don't need to build the access to the park today. I mean, although it'd be nice to have all this planned out, and no stream there, and a nice flat piece of property that we could do something with, but that's not reality. But the fact is that this piece, eventually, we could tie into a walkway to get to Centennial Park, so more people may use Centennial Park, or more, more people may use it, may use it to maybe do a loop or something like that. I mean, it's no different than, you know, five people sitting around the boardroom saying, we're going to take the Liberty Bell Trail and put some limestone down, and people are using, everybody thought we were crazy, but yeah, we're the first community in Montgomery County to have the Liberty Bell Trail, and then everybody's trying to jump on the bandwagon. You know, that was because we did it, not anybody else. That's because this little borough did it, and it was thinking like that. So this piece of property, although maybe we don't have all those answers today, I, I, I think the, the density goes hand in glove. I mean, we're requiring the open space subdivision, so I think that null and voids the density requirement. I mean, if they can, I mean, I don't know what the slide would have to be in order to make it. I mean, certainly, we could slide the lot line a little bit, or slide the, the units a hair, or, you know, again, I don't know what number, what, what's the number you're looking for? But again, I think that goes hand in glove with the requirement of the open space that we want, that if it wasn't there, they would be compliant. We are asking them for the subdivision, therefore, you know, we, we can create the subdivision for the borough ourselves, so.
Yeah, and I would have to confer with the borough's listener and the zoning officer to see, you know, if there's notes that can be.
Absolutely.
A regular plan.
Absolutely.
But my point, you know, more than anything else is, if your intention is to have a walkway or a potentially walkway to the park, don't handcuff yourself now. You know, make sure it's usable for your intent as part of this development. I'm not suggesting you put in a bridge or anything like that.
No, 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 I get that, but, but part of this property does butt up against our property. Across the creek, so at worst case, the absolute worst case, if we were not granted an easement from, from the Walker property, we could put a bridge, we would, we would have connectivity at that point. So again, that's more of an expensive option. Skirting the rear of the Walker property seems like a no harm, no foul, and, you know, why wouldn't he be willing to give it to us? I, I, you know, again, that's in the future, but again, this is our opportunity to get this piece of property, and I think even though we might not have all the details worked out, I think we need to have this included as in our open space.
And I completely agree with that. A couple of other things here. Lighting, we talked about, again, state, state lighting property. Centenary sewer, TPD's been required, and my group believes last year, it's on, that's the name.
We've had preliminary conversations, so we're working through that.
I will note, we did meet with, with Ben, we helped Jamie and Steve myself on the property, we did show up and walk in, so. Here's the concerns I've had with property.
Slide back down, maybe one here, so that they can get.
Whatever, I, I just. No, 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 you're, you're right. You're, you're right. I mean, I was.
Remain on your property. So you can see a few point bend where the, the these areas, right? So that would maintain, be maintained within the property of the townhome development. That's really the lot line that's proposed for the borough property and the townhome property.
Right. Yeah.
We're also, we're keeping the under. So that's, and right now, that underground basin area has proposed to be a relatively flat grass area with an underground basin underneath it. So what you see in the surface is grass or whatever, you know, that is, they should do it on.
You could, you guys.
Yeah, we're going to leave it as a special. So one of my questions was, even though this is a street, it's not designed as a street, it's not going to be a bike street.
Probably have twenty five.
I don't have an answer to that, where, you know, the.
I don't see the need.
Other than that, it's just the waivers. Uh, so they are requesting two waivers. One, uh, parking areas, and when I say parking areas, that includes the driveway. Not allowed to be within twenty feet of the property lines, you can see there, I think eight or nine, I believe. Along the, the right hand side of the plan, it's kind of a north, north point, yeah. So their driveway and parking is going to be within twenty feet of the property line. And then the second waiver they're requesting is to provide a privacy fence and a little landscaping, also along that same property. It is a waiver. That's all I have with my comments.
All right, um, is there some members of that audience that would like to talk, speak? Or are you just here to, oh, well, whoever wants to go first, go ahead. Just state your name. State your name and your address for the record.
Hello, Detective Lewis, I have one five one Orchard Lane. But first of all, I want to thank the opportunity to speak about twenty, twenty three North Main Street. I believe that development, uh, developer has done almost everything possible. With this unusual fossil land to make it fit into the borough, and I give them a lot of credit. First, I'm not against development. But now as a community, we must look at each side that gets impacted by communities. I don't mind the twenty, uh, twenty three North Main Streets, town, townhomes. That are failing to be built. But I am very concerned about the traffic. Impact that the driveway from this project is going to have on one of our most. Main arteries, North Main Street. I looked over and read the most, what I could understand, of the traffic impact assessment, and that was a big package. And it looks like the engineer, expert, engineering experts, experts say that the traffic has been satisfied. Actually addressed at this time, at this time. However, in that package, the bone letter dated November seventh. Those state that under number one. Now, it should be noted that based on the information provided on table ten of the T I A study. The queues along the North Main Street from the intersection of Broad Street. Wilmick Ski has the site access toward Peak Hours. The drive, driveway and traffic signals, operation, shooting monitor after the draw was just opened. And operating at full throttle. No, I, I feel that's like a little power. It's not standing on the real concrete. One hand is a little problem, on the other hand, that's still a place that's in the problem too. I've lived in Hatfield Borough for five years, and I've noticed that uptick of traffic in short time I've lived here. Here's my latest observations as I see them. I measured, I measured, when I've been measured, that this is from the Broad Street and Main Street intersection, the corner. To the center of the proposed driveway, can you just slide up a little bit? So I ran from the corner to the center, becoming the proposed driveway. And that is a hundred and fifty eight feet, which to me, to me, is very close to the intersection. I have driven that many a times, and it takes me five seconds at twenty five miles an hour. To get to the proposed driveway from Broad Street and Main, either straight. From South Main Street, or turning onto North Main Street from West Broad Street. Either way, it's five seconds. With that information in mind, with the help of Google search. I found a stopping distance calculator. And I'm going to give you three different scenarios, uh, of vehicles. The average, according to my panel, or my research. The average driver perception, the action time is one point five seconds. At one point five seconds, at twenty five miles an hour, it'll take eighty five feet to stop. Leaving you seventy three feet from the safety zone. At thirty miles an hour, it takes a hundred and nine feet. Which leaves you a safety zone of forty nine feet. At thirty five mile. We know people drive thirty five mile, for all. You know, it might try and beat that light. At thirty five miles an hour, it takes a hundred and thirty five feet to stop. That gives you a safety margin of only twenty three feet. Number two scenario, the driver perception, the action time of two point zero seconds. For a tire, or an older person, sadly, which I am. At twenty five miles an hour, now you're talking a hundred and two feet. The safety of distance up to over fifty five. At thirty miles an hour, it takes a hundred and thirty one feet. That leaves you twenty seven feet of safety. At thirty five miles an hour, the stopping distance is now a hundred and sixty one feet. You're a negative three feet. Now, if I'm correct, when I read the T I A report. They use. On the report on page three, or your page on your thirty nine, at the bottom. They use the driver perception, reaction time of two point five seconds. Which kind of surprised me. But I think that might be because of state law, I'm sure, that the bottom of the page it has. So using that, and now, at twenty five miles an hour, now the stopping distance to a hundred and twenty one feet. Which gives you forty thirty seven feet of safety. Now, that's if you pick up, now, if you pick up that happening, the traffic coming out of that driveway at the corner. At thirty miles an hour, you're talking, it's going to take a hundred and fifty three feet, a left over five feet of safety. And if you're traveling at thirty five miles an hour, that's a hundred and eighty seven feet, you're at a negative twenty nine feet. With the building of the eight townhouses, and most likely two cars. Two cars per household, as per P A statistics, and sixteen vehicles using that driveway. Plus utility vehicles, such as trash, fuel deliveries, and then let's not forget Amazon vehicles. I do understand that all that new traffic will not be using it at the same time. But it is additional traffic that is so close to the business intersection in the borough is the concern. I live on Orchard Lane. And the only way out that I can enter North Main Street is from East School Street. And for me to, to make a left turn onto North Main Street, takes me a little while sometimes due to traffic. From East School Street, it is a good distance from Broad and Main Street intersection. And I had a great gap distance to see oncoming vehicles. In conclusion, once this development is completed after proposed, we may have made a dangerous situation. With the people of the borough and the people traveling through the borough. And I noticed the list a couple of times that came to me, that what would you suggest? How would I pick this following? Our first suggestion is to have the driveway entrance on East Broad Street, which would mean it's rather without the buyer. A home on East Broad Street, that I drew for. I know that, that is not likely going to happen. But I would suggest to the planning committee to at least have no, no left turns. On North Main Street during rush hour, morning, or night, or evening, from the proposed driveway. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question as far as.
Can, can you come up to the podium and state your name, your name and your address, please?
My name is Janet, I live at thirteen East Broad in Hatfield. Um, when, when you had the houses, I, I want to know how close the drive is going to be to our property. And I see, I'm, I'm happy for the borough that you give the land, but I see the townhouses are really not close to all of us. On Broad Street, East Broad Street, so I just want to know how. Close are the townhouses roughly, the townhouses?
Yeah, I'm just looking up where you're at. The, the driveway should be roughly eight or nine feet off the property line.
It's roughly fifty feet to the rear property line.
The townhouse is further this way than they first was proposed? Oh, I know, I can see, but they're still, they're still there, so.
The driveway to our driveway.
But one, one, one at a time, so we can record this, please.
So along, along the property line going vertical, which I believe is your rear property line? That is right, the end of the driveway will be about eight or nine off the property line.
So, so the, will the, will the cabin be right up to my property?
It'll be about eight or nine feet off your property.
What will be?
And there, there will be a fence between your property line and the driveway, so privacy fence here, and then eight or nine feet between the privacy fence.
That's going to be, then the eight or nine feet where you.
Correct.
Who's following that?
The New Commerce Association law.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to turn to, to go from the audience, yeah.
Barney Hanson, I hate to bro. Um, we're right on the corner there, I love your traffic assessments, that's amazing, amazing work there, um. My biggest concern is, is like he has, now, we're probably the most impacted because we're right there. We're at that intersection, and we, we live there, I've been there thirty nine years, and I, it's, I've watched the change. But the, the concern is what we deal with day to day, trying to get out of my driveway. I, I now backing my driveway, and, and I'm trying to pull out, and I've got a driveway directly across from me. And then I got the lawyers next door, well, now you're making the lawyers next door be a multiple driveway. Um, so I already have the driveway across, I've got the intersection where the people are coming around. They're coming through the intersection, they're making turns, so I'm dealing with four different things going on out here at the intersection. Because we're right there, like it's, you know, you, you get what I'm saying? Like I'm trying to get out of my driveway, and there's the intersection, and people keep coming, even if the light's off, people are coming around the other way, making the turns. So I've got this driveway here, and then we've got the church, the Lutheran church, and, I mean, I, I, this traffic study, you said this from twenty twenty? That's not.
Twenty two.
Twenty two, okay, well, still, it's, I don't know how much of the pandemic affected that. Huh? It didn't affect in twenty, in twenty two, there was still less cars on the road, probably, right? I mean.
There was a lot of people working from home and.
I, there's still people in, in the government that are not back at work, in our sense, I mean, are still people. So, I mean, right now, it's not a real, whenever that statement was, I would say the traffic was much, much slower. There's a lot of traffic that comes through that intersection, I mean, we live there, we know. It's, I cannot get out of my driveway easily, and I, like I said, I have all these forces already to worry about. People, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big road, Calvin, and you talk about that backed up stuff? That, that's constant, like, that, that backed up, uh, it doesn't even, I, like, there's no rush hour anymore. There's just constant traffic, I mean, there's, I would say, it, it's not rush hour, it's the, the traffic lessens. It, it lessens, it's constant, but it lessens, it's not that where the cars are just lined up and you see its lights. Um, but my question is, so I have a real beef about that, I don't think the traffic study was really done correctly. I don't know who I'm criticizing, but I just think it's, that's a tough area right there, and you want to put sixteen, then that's sixteen cars. That's just the people who live there, they have family, they have visitors, they have, like you said, the trucks and this, that. I want to know where are, um, where's it going to be? Like you said, it's up against, it's closer now to us, it's moved closer, that, that means you move the driveway over too? Driveway's in the same spot.
Yeah.
But the houses moved closer? They look to me like that's what I was.
They're, they're in the same location.
Yeah, they're in the same location, they, they didn't move any closer.
Yeah, they, they removed some units.
One.
Yeah, and, and that's why it looks like it moved over, yeah.
Okay, so that, my, my concern is, it's still not an in and outs, but it's still one driveway. And all that's going to go on right there, that's the line. Where's, where's the fence going to go, how far out does, will the fence come out? I have a garage that runs along the driveway there right now.
Yeah, so there's what's required to be a slight triangle, meaning nothing to be within a, a triangle of seventy five feet each direction from the center line. They're proposing the fence to stop, is that your house or?
Yeah, roughly at her property line.
I don't, I can't.
It stops at her property line, yeah.
That's what I interpret.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what it is.
I just play one on TV.
I just play one Monday through Friday.
This is your side yard, right?
Yeah.
This is your, I think so. That's your, that's your, yeah. So the, the fence will come close to the front of your.
It's, it's, Chad, it stops at her property line, the upper one. Yeah, the upper one.
She has the driveway right here, practically on the property line at a garage here.
Okay, but the fence stops at the, at the northern property line. Yeah, that's where the fence ends.
I saw it.
That's not what the plan shows.
Right. I think my, yeah, on both sides. Maybe it can come to the front of the garden. This pole stays. So this pole stays. This pole's roughly right here. And so our new roads getting shifted closer starts over here and then curved back. So your, your structure. So your driveway is here.
Yeah.
So our roads, you know, this distance is, well, we need some feet, maybe twenty-five feet from here. So you're going to get northbound, right? And you'll look strip progress? That's the.
Oh, that's fine.
And so that pole's instead. There's an arrow in there.
But.
Things to second plan.
And.
And that's always. That might be more help.
What, um, so, okay, so there's, there's.
The county.
In her garage.
An arrow. So you can get perspective. There's the professor's office. Here's where the driveway is located. This is your house. If you can't see. Here's the intersection.
Okay.
This is your house here, right?
Uh huh. I think it better.
This is your house. This is the.
Do you want to look on here? This is a lot better. It's just a projector.
So is this your house or is this your house? That's the garage and bathroom. It's all one lot, yeah. Your driveway is right here. You can see that.
Oh, okay.
Fence will go roughly to the front of your garage. Probably, maybe a couple feet back. Same thing with this. It'll go roughly to the front of the house.
That, that will be done. So this whole area will be fenced in? It'll be on.
They're privacy fences.
Well.
Can't see anymore.
And two fingers from a TV.
Totally created a traffic issue. But my other question is lighting? What are these houses going to be lived with? Is there going to be streetlights back in that development?
Yeah, there's a legal.
So how tall will these buildings be? So will there be like someone in or second floors?
So, you know, this, right out here, these townhouses right here at the end of the driveway, here on the left side, here.
Wait, we go out of here?
Yeah, those towns. It's exactly, that's what they are. Three stories high.
Three stories. So they'll be looking in our, in our house. Will there be lights, streetlights?
Yeah, so.
There'll be streetlights similar to what we have and, and we'll work to make sure they're shielded so that there's no light spill onto your property. And that, that'll be something they'll have to do in the field, but there's two lights proposed now. We may need a third or a fourth light depending on where they position them, but they're going to work with Chad on that.
The lighting back in the units?
Yeah, we're back on the, like, like a, like a light, like along the highway, along the road, along the parking areas. Not on the unit or in the unit, the actual, like a streetlight. Yeah. It's similar to what we have on our streets.
And, and like Ken said, we'll have, they'll be shielded down so the light shines.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be shielded and we'll, we'll work, we'll work with the builder and. Yeah.
What about walkways? I was wondering about walkways. Is there any walkways that'll go out to the toll stop or?
There's, there's a walkway that goes out to Main Street from.
That's.
Sidewalk this way. And there's two heavy trucks.
So that, that's coming out. Our car, when you outside the drive?
Yes.
So they'll all be coming out showing our driveway, our sidewalks.
Traffic. Anything you want in there, you get. Don't give away that.
I, I was anxious to hear the traffic study. So you had the traffic study.
Well, so there was one done and that's what I was asking about because I agree, I, I don't like the numbers because I don't think those numbers are are true numbers for today. They're not, you know, I mean, they're two years old and what was happening then was, was we were coming out of the pandemic. There wasn't as many, you know, exactly what you're saying. So that's why I, the last time we met, I asked for a new study. And they gave us a new report with the data from the old report. And that's not what I want. I don't want something dated two thousand twenty-two. I want to know what's happening now.
But we read on the borough's going to be the bad guy. You might want him to, this traffic engineer should fight for his traffic studies. Anton says it's fine. Those numbers are fine. They meet, they meet end-out requirements.
No, I know.
Something you can do. I don't want the borough to say that because. Like his traffic engineer.
Traffic engineer should be here.
I do have an update for you on the traffic counts. I got an email back from the traffic engineer. It's not the way that we're thinking. They were lower in twenty twenty-three, so he still used the twenty-two numbers because it was higher. So he's going to get letters since that, but that's why he used the old numbers because they were actually higher.
I find that really hard to believe. I mean, I was out there driving around in that, right? I mean, okay, okay. No, but that's, yeah. Don't shoot the best.
It's a reputable company. TPD and McMahon or Bowman are like the two top companies.
I mean, that's great, but that's like saying, we have to use the Pennsylvania state standards. What the heck does Harrisburg know out there? They don't know what's happening here. I get it.
There's one, so I, I have a concern about the traffic study also. I'm not sure what the numbers are right now if we took the survey. But if you're looking over the building, what's going on up Calphane? Sometimes when it's, I don't try to get out of it, right? I can't make the left there. There's lots of people up to your road. And go around, go up to the school, right on that way. It's your service traffic and the defense of this under age. But if you look at the amount of traffic on Calphane around prime clock and entering, coming up north. It, it sounds as drunk, there's nothing sense. In lieu of the traffic, you see more fueling going on. All over the place. I think those numbers are just going to go up in the crease that is, is staying up now, but, you know, how big is that to denture for? We're going to do something about it.
Is there any other people in the, in the audience that would like to talk?
Doug Renter, twenty-five North Main. I'm with him on the traffic thing. I'm here. You can have all the numbers. You just sit out there and look at it. It's just a mess. You know, but if you're going to do a real traffic study, you need to do it. Perfect. Not a year, not two years ago. That's no, no accurate assessment. One other thing is, we're talking about this open space here. I'm not sure if I understand where exactly where that's going to be. We put the eight townhouses in there.
Are you talking about on their property or the portion that they're giving to the borough?
Yeah, the portion to the bare corro and relationship to the creek.
Well, I, I think, as I stated before, that the portion that they're dedicating to the borough is just that open space. I think eventually, I think it would be the desire of the borough to somehow get a trail through the open space and to connect to the trail at Centennial Park. Now, whether that's via a bridge that goes over the creek or through an easement that goes through the Walker property. It hasn't been designed, but developments like this in the borough are so far and few between that this is an opportunity to get a piece of open space that will attach to already open space that we, that we own. That this is our opportunity and, and although nothing's been designed yet, you know, we, at least we are in control of it. We own it. And that in the future, we can do something with it.
Does that, this have to be finalized before this?
No, 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 no. The dedication of the open space has to be finalized and it is shown on the plan. The layout of a trail or whatever can be done at any time.
And what you see, the trees there are what we're calling the open space roughly. All the trees are roughly in the open space. So it's not active recreation at this time. It's meant to just be preserved.
Right.
For potentially a future trail. No more development in the future. It's going to be deed restricted.
Right. And hopefully at some point we can tie it into the Centennial Trail and that would give people an opportunity to maybe loop through or walk through it. Use it for what it was meant to be.
I already said it's still going to be a mess and I don't, I just think it's going to be, the whole thing's going to be unsafe. No. That's personally against this gentleman. Do you think it's going to be safe there? That'll have to save now. And comes, and under perhaps five pound sack.
And why is it going to be eight? Why couldn't it be twelve? Do I have to get to the mic?
We can ask you.
Math, math doesn't work.
The math doesn't work before?
Correct.
For them, they can't make enough money.
Is it, is there anybody else from the audience that has questions, comments, concerns? All right.
Is this approved by the borough or are you guys?
Well, we, we are only a recommending body. We're, we're going to, we're going to talk for a minute here. Whether we recommend approval or denial, he, the, the developer will still move forward to council. Council makes the ultimate decision, not us. Again, we're only a recommending body and.
And do you want to consider the waivers first?
Yes, yeah. It was only two waivers. Is that what I saw? So the two waivers.
I think for this, I think we should wait for the other people to be here. Instead of voting with only three of us.
Your choice.
We should just continue this.
Is there a guarantee that they're going to be here at next meeting? They weren't at the last meeting.
Oh, you were late.
No, I, I was late. I, I certainly wasn't.
You can't tell.
But I'm here. I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm never going to give somebody that's on an emergency call like that.
No, 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 no. I, I, I understand that. I'm, my.
I'm just saying the magnitude of this.
No, no, I, I get that. Again, we're only a recommending body and.
I'm not going to vote to move forward.
Tonight?
Yeah, just tonight. I want to wait till we're all here.
Till all five members of the planning commission. Till all five members of the planning commissioners.
Schedule a special meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
So we're not totally trying to, not to hold things up for them.
I can do whatever you guys want me to do. Obviously, you know that that comes at a cost for the borough for advertising. The next meeting is actually a week earlier because of the Christmas, Christmas holiday. So I believe it's eighteen, seventeen, sixteen.
Or a week early too because of Thanksgiving.
Yeah. So it's like you're not waiting till the fourth Monday like we normally are because of Christmas.
All right.
But that, that's up to you guys. I certainly will do and run any advertisement for any meeting you want.
I, I wouldn't want to do a special meeting just because of cost. We don't want to do that.
Or, what is your, you, you feel the same way?
I, I think it'd probably be nice to have the input of the other two commissioners.
Okay, all right. So with you two voting like that, there's not going to be a motion or a second, so it's immaterial at this point. But, but just so, because we have residents here, are you, okay, there, there's two waivers that are listed. Do you have questions, comments, concern on, on the waivers? Because I'd rather get any comments we have out tonight so that we're less time discussing, more time
So the, the waiver is having the driveway located where it's shown. It's closer to the property lines than it's allowed by your ordinance. And again, they're proposing a privacy fence between the property lines and the driveway. So that's.
Was there any kind of precedent with that or not? No.
Well, there's no, it, it's not like he's got a big plot of land and he wants to put it here.
No, I get that, yeah.
He's landlord.
Oh, I don't need for him. I need for somebody else.
Because, because his hardship is the fact of he only has this much land.
Right.
If it was somebody else that comes in and wants to put it close to a property line and they have room to move it, then certainly I would think, I would think council will not act favorably upon that waiver because they have room to move it.
Right.
In this case, he does not have room to move it. He's actually moving it away from Bonnie's house to try to give her some more space and some more area and, and, and to give the gentleman was talking about safe stopping distance.
It's not his plan that created the need for the waiver. It's just the way the lot looks.
Yeah. Right. And the second waiver is for the fence.
Providing fencing, privacy fencing along the property lines in lieu of all the trees that are required. The reality of trees don't fit.
Are you guys good with the fence?
It's fine with this. The, for six foot, the way my property is, which right, the lawyer's backyard is about two feet. So a six, it's going to be four feet. So it's, it's no privacy fence for me at all. It's six feet.
Would you rather have bushes or tree, or is the fence okay?
How about one of those twenty-foot green fence? Those evergreens. Four or five. I might even vote for it if you put those up.
I, well, I guess, I guess the question is, would the residents rather see landscaping in lieu of the fence?
I don't mind arborvitae. It's just, you know, what's going to happen is they're going to get bigger, right?
They're spread. Well, some are skinned here.
Yeah, but they still, they spread. They, they're going to get wider, right? So eventually it's going to, they're going to come on your property. And so if you're okay with that and you don't mind trimming them back, I don't have a problem with the arborvitae.
It's right.
I've had nightmares. Like I've had arborvitae at my house and I cannot get them to live. And along here, you can have a swale.
Well, that's true, yeah.
You don't like them?
No, I, I want them, but I can't get them to survive. I spend way too much money repairing them. Because I have a swale along my property line where they are. And same thing with you guys. You're going to have a swale along your property line. And that's right where the arborvitae would need to be. Where the water's going to drain.
A low space.
It, it's fine with me if you put a fence up. I'll just plant my own green also.
I, I don't think.
It's not, the fence is not going to do anything for.
Yeah, that's the other side of it too, is a fence isn't going to die, but the planting's may, you know, then you'd have to replace them or somebody would have to. Well.
At least it teaches people from putting on your property.
Right.
Mine, so it's mine, I, I do have fence, but I think most of the people on East Broad, no, no one has fence. So I would think, although they don't come to the meeting, I would think they'd want a fence because. So I would think, although they don't come to the meeting, I would think they'd want a fence because then people aren't cutting through, look at the trolley.
So the fence would be fine, okay.
The fence is great.
Alright, since at least two members of the planning commission would like to wait for the other two members. We're going to continue this hearing. I, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys seem to be satisfied with the waivers. The two waivers that are listed there. Um, I think the other two comments is, is nu- number one, just I would like on the plans to memorialize about that easement and if, if, again, I don't know monetarily how that works, but if it is some kind of monthly payment or whatever that memorializes it, that it goes to the homeowners association because it technically would be on that lot somehow, you know, and, and again, that's a, may, maybe that's a key question, I'm not sure. Um, you had indicated that your traffic engineer would write a letter. I I not try, not trying to reinvent the wheel, but instead of a letter, what, is it something simple for him to actually show the numbers in the table? So the old numbers and the new numbers to show what the difference is, to show that we're, that you are being more conservative by using the older numbers versus the newer numbers, you know what I'm saying? Maybe more, more than a letter, but not quite an in, an inch thick report, you know, you know what I'm saying? And then would you also ask him to address, a gentleman uh, tonight said about um, prohibiting left-hand turns during rush hour times and, and again, I'm not sure what again, that, that rush hour times, I know we had lots of discussion about rush hour, but maybe that's something that Anton and your, your TPD engineer could maybe come to an agreement so that, so that yes, we know you can have left-hand turns out of there, but not during the heavy peak times that, you know, you know, they can go up to Larry's house and visit him, you know?
Yeah, that's exactly what's going to happen.
But, but you understand what I'm saying.
Ben, would you be willing to have your traffic engineer here to me? So that questions would be asked directly of him?
That's a great idea, yeah.
And we had a left turn links before and he had come back and said.
Or we'll get, or we'll get our new traffic engineer here.
I think, I think that would be a, a good way for the, you know, everybody that has concerns.
Can I say that?
Or is this for their driveway?
No. It would just be the driveway, it wouldn't affect any. Yes, it would just be this development, it would not be your driveways or anything like.
The post office.
Or the post office, it wouldn't affect the post, it would only affect, um. Yes. Yeah, and just, you know, like you had said, peak hours, you know, if we could address that as well. And if we can wait to the next regularly scheduled meeting, I think, again, I think ninety percent of the letter is will comply. Um, we don't need them to revise the plan for the next meeting more, it's just a matter of clarification of the traffic report. And once we get satisfaction of that, then I would think we're in a position, now again, we're only recommending body, so even if this board denies it, it still moves on the council, it doesn't, uh, an approval or denial doesn't, it's only a recommending body. So that, so that it would still be forwarded to council and they would still have to go through the presentation with council because council's ultimately the, the approving authority in the borough.
You could go ahead and do your, if I, I don't know, it just goes, moves on, does that, does that have any bearing on it?
It, it, no, it doesn't have any bearing on it, it, it only I, I, I think if this board was to act favorably upon it, it would look a little better at council than a denial. But again, that, that's purely up to you guys, I mean, we want to give John and Michelle an opportunity, then let's give them the opportunity, if that's your, then, then I have no problem with that. But, but I guess my only point is if, if they're called away again next time, we're not moving this to January, I mean, they've had three bunnies at the apple, I mean, again, I know they got to work and I get that, I totally get that. You know, I was late tonight.
I know.
But, but we, we do want to move this along regardless, you know, so.
Traveling this traffic. What's the best that we can hope for is the, the right hand prohibit?
Well, the, 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 the traffic report and the, the review letter that Anton wrote basically said everything was fine.
Right.
Okay, so he, there was no prohibiting, it's not like it's a write-in or write-out.
Right.
Okay, permanent. So it's not like we can put a light there because there's not enough warrants. So they went through that and Anton said, this is the best, this is the best that meets the standards in all the professional documents, Penn Dot, even though it's not a Penn Dot Road, Penn Dot. Um, their, their, their review, you know, their comments, questions, concern, because there's a lot of Penn Dot items referenced here because that's the local, that's the statewide agency that, that all of our local access is governed to. So all of those have been met, the, 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 the traffic standards have been met. I think if his engineer looks at possibly limiting, and, and you've seen the signs before, no left-hand turn during rush hour.
As if they have that sign, it's long without having to meet any tracks.
Yes, yes, we can, and, and I think that was, that was the one thing that we're asking tonight is, you know, have their en- engineer look at it.
I'll have a look at it, but if it's not acquired, I wouldn't want to do it. I want it to be full access. I'd also make a recommendation that it, just like Anton's number one comment says, it be monitored. So it's a, can potentially be a, a condition of approval, that it be reevaluated after X number of months and if at that point in time, it's deemed necessary.
And, and also, and, and also too, they have a construction period and then they have a year and a half maintenance period. If that year and a half maintenance period, we have problems. We can go back to the developer and say, and say, you know what, this isn't working for us, we need a write-in and write-out. Or you need to put that sign up, that's why you have the maintenance period to make sure that improvements and, and stuff work as they're designed, work as what the report says it's going to do.
You can say Anton told it.
He doesn't, he doesn't. So, you know, I mean, I think, I think that's, that's some things that if we can do that and we get the engineer here and then we can ask questions and, and, and we will try to get our engineer here and because I, 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 that's obviously the biggest concern. I mean, I think Chad's comments are pretty much ninety percent of them are will complies, which are, which I didn't see as being big and the other things they pretty much have agreed to, so.
So, I, I don't know, were you guys able to hear this? I don't know if you were, so, so this is going to go to the next planning commission meeting? But the, we're going to try to get the traffic engineer here. So if you want to ask questions, be here for that meeting, okay, because then you can get right from the horse's mouth. He might not like be called a horse.
Victor, Victor, Victor just had it up on his computer, the traffic study, they, they get one hour in the morning, one hour and then one hour in the afternoon. Excuse me, I live there, let me tell you that one hour, yeah, uh, the.
Well.
That, that's, you know, it's.
That's what you're, you're studying.
That, that's studied.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's like a couple of you said, none of us are against growth and, and it, and it, and it would be a good thing for the borough, I mean, we're going through things right now that it would help the borough. But there's also the traffic thing, you know, and, and for you, that's the, as you can tell, that's the only reason that, that this is a hard time. Is because, I mean, if, if it wasn't, if that lot wasn't sitting where it's sitting, if the exact same situation was out in the middle of the street, you know, with no cross, there'd be no problem. So, you know.
No, so we, we started with nine, so we dropped it to eight or four.
And there's nobody go out the other way too, like you can't get in another way out, like even just the walking bridge, like some, some way that all, everything doesn't come out into main street. Uh, there's, or they don't own it.
That's why I suggested Bonnie helps go that way.
Well, you, you do just make it a mess for the people like me on the.
It's your problem now, right?
Well, I got the driveway.
To me, that was out of the morning to the middle of the block, so being so close to you, through that corner. And if you come up uh, board, that might force people to, and they're not working. And both they have the stock at the bottom, so they're not going to travel that speed where they're coming down on South here in. They have to be, you know, down that street.
Yes. Yes. I was at Crossing Door back in, in nineties, eighties and it was, I was constantly slowing people down. That was back then, now, like Jan mentioned earlier, she said she watches tons of people go through red lights. They just flow right through those red lights. You know, but I, I get upset about that because of this one. That's, that's a nightmare, I see people running red lights, I, I just get this PTSD every time. So it's, you know, it's real legitimate concerns, we're not trying to be.
No.
A mean or nasty.
Yeah, and, and I mean, all of us, for the most part, live here too and we drive through the same thing, so we know what you're talking about.
Alright, well, thank you for coming out, this, um, this hearing or this project will be continued to December sixteenth twenty twenty-four's, uh, planning commission meeting for, um, most likely a recommendation when all five members are present, so. Alright. Alright, next on the agenda, we have old business, we have updates, Bennett's Court.
Bennett's Court is going for their first escrow release at council on Wednesday, so that development's moving along, occupied. Uh, B did in Green Houses, there is no update and C forty-three Roosevelt Avenue, there is no update.
Any new business?
No, the only new business was I put your, the twenty twenty-five meeting dates on there, if you have any, uh, they were at your places because it wasn't including your packets, any objections? Please email it to me, it's going to go to council on Wednesday and then they'll, we'll advertise that in December, so if you have any objections, please look at them, send me an email and we can coordinate.
Yeah.
It's the same schedules we had this year, fourth Mondays, unless there's a holiday like Memorial Day, then we'll bump it up to the third. Same with November and December, we bump it up to the third because of the holidays.
Right. Um, so we have no, we have no action items, the next planning commission meeting is scheduled for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all those in favor say aye, opposed, the ayes have it, thank you very much for coming out tonight.